In the. He's putting the gavel down.
Okay, everybody ready?
We.
And we're good for last.
Nope.
Sorry. All right, here we are.
Recording?
Six oh one P M. We're recording. And we're ready to go. So let's have introductions around the room. We'll start with the head tape.
Scott Ryer, Select Board.
Dave Gallo, Select Board.
Tom Markex, Select Board.
David Barlow, Secretary of the Select Board. And then off to Internet land. Miss Tangway Assistant.
Deb Tangway, Town Clerk, Town Bookkeeper.
She with all our friends out there.
And yeah.
I am.
Hey, in the back room, Kate Fletcher, who will make an appearance. To be named later. Okay, so call meeting calls are ordered at six oh two P M. Changes or additions to the agenda.
I would like to add an update with the website and I can just run through it quick.
Okay.
Wherever you want to do it. And then did you?
Did you want anything on that? Not that one.
Nope.
I would like to add a flood zone update. Also under other business, just a bit.
And then inward there. I guess it's on here, but you know, the under. Nineteen A. You'd mentioned possibly an executive. We're not doing that tonight.
I did end up taking that off after talking with you as well. There's no particular time crunch on that.
Okay.
So and I have not been able to get a hold of.
Brian?
Brian on this particular topical, though, like it's just like giving a heads up.
Okay, yep. All right, if you have to get back to them. All right, if you want me to try to reach out to him.
Give me one more day with.
If not, I call him on his cell at eight o'clock.
I just like to tie us today with.
Yep, okay.
Renting the community center. Surprisingly busy business. Okay, other changes or additions? Ah, public comment.
Does Coco have anything?
None heard.
Okay.
Well.
All right.
He's by my feet. He's by my feet.
That's rough. Naming of country estate subdivision access road, item number four.
So I can't remember the woman's name that bought that one lot, but. This is Tony Tangway's subdivision up on Alderbrook Road. We need to name that drive that he that Peon has built. The the estate or that whole subdivision, Tony has named Country Meadows, but. There's too many Meadows in the area to. And Peon didn't really want it. He really wants Peon Road. So I said, yeah. So I was trying to, I don't like going with personal names, but. He's saying, I'm driving around and see all these actual names of the looking like Lester drives right there and he points out Lester like. I'll bring it up to everybody and they can make the decision. I haven't gotten anything else. The other, the woman that was.
Diane.
Rich Diane LaRae, I know her daughter.
So there was a Diane and there was another fellow that emailed prior to that. About driveway access that I'd already granted approval to Mr.
Off of Alderbrook Road?
Off of Alderbrook.
Cause there's two lots down.
And I think he might be a different one, so I didn't know.
Okay, yeah, because there's two, one, one and two. Have access off of Alderbrook Road from what the prince say. Three also does, but I think there she Diane said something about three also having a right of way through Diane's over to that road. Which is through lot four, which is Dan's. And then Bones is three, five, six, seven, or six, seven, eight, whatever it is up top.
Seven, eight, nine.
Seven, eight, nine. So then there's still two that aren't sold yet, right?
Yeah. I think maybe three.
And that whole is on his, his property.
Is on bones.
Is on bones. Yeah, so. But I don't have a problem at being Peon Road. I try not to do that just because, but. I haven't, Diane didn't have any suggestions. She didn't want it named after him, but.
So would she access an off Bones's Road?
Yeah, that's so she has a right of way off of Bones's.
Why don't we name it Bonesy's?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I like.
I'd rather pee on.
Let's go Bones's.
Bones's Road.
Yeah.
That.
Let's do it.
I want to take a motion.
I make a motion. We call it. What do you want to call it? No, you.
Bone emotion.
Bones's Road.
B O N Z, Bonesy?
No.
Bones.
Bones.
Bones Road, B O N E S Road.
Who's calling you?
David is. I'm letting them to do this.
B O N E S.
Is that what you'd say, Deb, Bones?
No.
Go with it.
I mean, you can always come back and rename it.
All right.
Second.
What are you naming that?
Bones, apparently. You don't name it Bonesy's?
Oh, my gosh.
B O N Z I E S, Bonesy's Road. Drive. I didn't run that by him, so I don't know. He might not even want it that way. I don't care. I like that name.
Yeah.
It's if it's Bones, Bonesy's.
Bones.
Bones.
We'll go with Bones for now. Bones's Road.
B O N E S.
Yeah.
Should I verify with him how he spells it?
No.
No.
Okay.
Is yours? So move. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying because it's mine. That's better than Peon. Who wants to live on a Peon Road? I don't know, Bonesy's Road.
I didn't have any other answers. Are we ready?
Jumping on to number five.
Road. Road update discussion, road commissioner.
Okay, so I sent all of you the V Trans email from Jason. So he's offering the geotechnical team to come in and do a quick review of the slope on Coffee Station. It's a minimal cost. And then just kind of point us in the right direction.
I couldn't tell if that was it. Couldn't tell if it was all going to come out of there revolving.
No, it's a cost share out of that cost share thing, and I didn't, I've never accessed this. It's. It's just basically. It's available to all towns, but it's just a way for them to build us.
Yeah.
And he said the cost is really quite minimal and.
I think either way, it should be done.
Yeah, we can go from there. Also, from the B Trans side, I found out today that we have received a fifty six thousand dollar grant for Hancock Hill Road cover. I thank local roads for that and for the record, I'd like to also. Thank Eric Pope for plagiarizing Amanda Carlson's previous grant. And had three head walls I want to do on Pine Hill before we get going. I reached out to Richard McAllister. I think the biggest thing there is going to be. Him being able to get there.
What's a head road?
Head, head wall around that color of the washed out.
On both sides. That's on both sides.
No, just on the head wall, just where the water comes in.
Oh, poor man.
Yeah.
To protect it a little more.
So in hindsight, I probably should have done that after the two thousand nineteen flood.
Is it that color you're talking about?
It's, it's that color, but at that point in time. I would base in my decisions on the condition of the color, which was poor. And you didn't have a head wall there. But if I can't get Richard in there in time, I think me and John and Zach could probably find something and that would get us through and get going on the pavement.
There's something that that's not necessarily something that has to go out for bed, isn't it?
It's probably going to be expensive. Concrete's gone up, what I hear, thirteen bucks.
Yeah. Brian, money, and then we, we don't have to get.
Do we have a policy for, because I know like the school.
We do have a policy over ten thousand.
Yeah, so that's. You do have an acquisition.
Yeah.
You can always. But you, you. We weigh that if you.
Yeah.
Why don't we, just in case we get in that situation?
If you want to get it done quicker.
Yeah.
You may not.
Well, I'd say you go talk to Richard, have him give you a price. If it asks if it's that way, then we come back.
Also. Has that invoice ever been sent? I marked that invoice that I had from Fireman Store. Have we ever reached out to be for to be L C T as far as an insurance claim?
No. I have not. I wanted to talk to you to verify that, that was about.
Is that all covered? What, covered by?
No, that's a six inch PVC.
They got stolen?
Yeah, the stuff they got stolen from the garage.
And the. Did you, were you able to count and come up with a number?
Three hundred and twenty feet.
Is that out of the box, back to return?
No, actually. Well, I, I purchased another three twenty in case we needed.
That's a job.
And then you returned.
Yeah.
So it's five, ten foot when I purchased it and it was seven, ten when I had to repurchase. Seven fifty.
Uh, okay, so this is the re-purchase and. Have a invoice somewhere what we paid for.
Yes.
So.
Okay, there is, I remember, I remember we covered the replacement cost.
I don't know.
I don't know.
We had a gain because we paid more, but then I brought a bunch back too. I don't know.
So what was the actual loss?
It was three hundred and twenty feet originally.
So this is the actual loss.
Yeah, is that what it was? Three twenty, but so I got there, the twenty two hundred.
I have an invoice. That appeared, you returned a hundred.
No.
Twenty six is the date.
Yeah.
This invoice?
Yeah, it's your thirty two pieces.
This is what you bought to replace it?
Yeah. And I marked, and I marked invoice that way.
You did.
Yeah.
So it's three hundred and twenty feet?
Yeah.
So that's the amount that was actually stolen.
Yeah.
Okay, so we.
We can probably find the original invoice in that.
I'm sure we can. You want me to contact the L T C now?
Yeah.
The invoice turned as well.
And that the state police will, either will or already have a report.
Yeah, I talked to Andy and I thought he said he had a number. I thought I mentioned that in a previous meeting to you that Andy had like a case.
There should be a case number there. I have a lot of cases on the state piece. They're all open.
I just saw him too, yes. All over from that.
Also had, I don't know if you guys got those emails that were sent out.
Pictures, I looked at them quick. I drove by and saw it.
Yeah.
The church?
Yeah.
Now, this, I, I saw those tracks like last week, I thought.
So that's, that's Spencer's.
Is that something you did or something?
No, that's something they're doing. Just pulling everything down, leaving it in the dirt.
Who's that?
It's probably Keith Jacob.
That's his land?
Well, that's not his land. It's Amber.
Amber Beeple.
Are they just cleaning out the woods?
Pulling that down, but just leave it.
Well, it's definitely in the house.
Right away.
And they need to leave the right of way to founder, right?
Or improved.
Just get back to where it should be, that one. And then my head of Rebecca over here at the church. That stuff was left on our land.
Can you see that, Deb? The new one? Okay.
Sure.
That pile?
That pile there.
There's another one. That's.
Then that pile was covering our drain to our drainage system for the village from the common back toward the garage.
Yeah.
Everything from the. Big hills and everything goes right to.
Is that like a?
On that picture, I can't see. I'm still looking at the first picture.
Okay, there are two pictures there. Is that a burn pile type of bucket?
A little bit of everything in there.
That, that, there's tar in there that shouldn't be burned.
Now, so what's happened is they. I didn't, I don't have a picture of it, but. You had one more update. Two where they.
Just buying, using, is this our property line right there, the fence?
That would be quite accurate. That would be the corner of Cobb's. In the town.
Cause our line goes across those two or three.
And actually, and actually the fence. It's a little bit further than the fence. There's a, I think Victor marked it with some red.
Who would have put that there?
Rebecca.
Delaney losing that old church?
And then right here. Now she's using it as a right of way. I've had to put, I put a block out there to stop it over the years. You know, there she drove right over Tony Tangway's property too, you know? I'm sure he's got enough work to do without doing other people's too.
So, no, we do. Listen, we get a game, game, but.
No, let's just put a fence.
Yeah, I got a block here, but they moved a block out of the way.
Hey. Jim's barriers. But can we put some?
I've got, I've got one of those smeth things.
What about that fence, that snow fence?
I'll put a good gate or something, but I think we should just send him a letter and tell him to cease and desist on that. I've got the deed just. All handy, you know, see that there's no right of way perceived.
We could probably email him and send him that picture there would be, make it pretty clear like that.
That's for the right of way, driving across it. But that's where the camera, like, have you seen, then Max, I know we assume it, but. I always like to have the proof, like if they're still driving, you get it with camera.
So they're coming off this way and driving.
They're coming from the storage units and driving through.
They did that.
But doesn't, they don't have a right of way through there, huh?
No, or our land. So I think we just send a letter to both landowners, get that straight now.
So this is both to Cobb and.
No.
No, not Cobb.
Rebecca and I think it's Amber before, right?
Yeah. All I got is, okay.
Clean it up.
We can work on that.
Rebecca is down and down, Amber's up on Spencer.
So these tractor tracks.
That's just, that's a scare.
That's a car pickup.
Yeah. David's making ruts this way. You can't see those.
Yeah.
They're one way. Okay.
That's the only reason I say.
Is that the only way she can get to the back of her house?
She can go down. It's hard, but she can go down through by the fence, because I, I remember years ago putting in the, actually I put in the leaf field for Doris and the property Cobb owns now. And that's how I access it. I had to back the truck down in there in the excavator. And move everything over the fence.
So do you want a, a letter signed by me or you guys are, are determined? I would suggest a low cost option first, which is me.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Just drive somehow.
You don't have to vote on it.
And not really. I feel like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Don't think any damage to the top of each other, but it's the same way.
That's a easy one. Stop doing well. Previously, this is too, but. Okay. This is a, yeah, I think, is it?
Yeah.
Was that it?
Yeah.
I have a question on this. Quote.
Yeah, oh, so that's a quote I got from Alex right here. To sandblasts repaint and.
The, did you tell me to do something?
Well, I just wanted to run it by you guys, what your thoughts were. I think, I guess my thoughts on that were.
Doing just the body or the whole?
Yeah, this is just the body and the frames of both trucks. And I thought maybe we can get them cleaned up in good shape, sandblasted. They'll do a pretty good job. And then I'll call and start working on trading them. Think the money that we put into it will pay for itself in the trade probably.
So it's eight thousand for both of them?
No, I think it's eight for the wheeler and five for the six wheeler.
Ten wheeler frame is two thousand, body colors. Three is six thousand and then so is it set? If you're, is this to paint?
That's for.
Six thousand?
Yeah, that's for the black on the frame, silver on the body and straight.
Oh, so he's going to paint the whole, the whole bodies?
Yeah, plus, plus on the coat them after. I think it's something that's worthwhile, just. Just from a trade perspective, I mean.
Well, you might.
No, you know, you get in that truck the other day and you're like me as well. It's pretty good shape, but it actually is, but I got thinking, you've already gone through. Twenty one, you've already gone through eight winters now.
And it looks as good as it does.
And it's, you know, it's time to go. Well, Ed's done a lot of work over the years too. It was really good about.
No, I think it's time to. I think it's time. I, you'll get this money back because when they go and.
I said, yeah, considering what was it you just did for Perkins? On one of them?
That was a rear rim.
Yeah.
Yeah, John popped that last nasty spring storm we had.
I, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I cost me two grand to get the frame sandblasted on my old white truck and painted, and that's just a little one time.
Yeah, I asked. Well, I think.
Bartley.
I asked Winnie and he said five just for me sandblasted, you know? Alex, Alex is pretty good at it.
Do we need a motion to this? No, this is.
No, I just wanted to put it in front of you and let you know what I was doing.
Okay, are you looking to do the trading before this winter?
This never happened.
That's why, that's why I was asking. I was curious.
We'll be lucky if we get one by next July.
Okay, that's why I was.
But after.
After we get them shut up, we'll.
Then the work.
Yeah, the steps and I'll get.
Yeah.
Mr. Saint Pierre up here to give us.
So we do this before this winter and then or wait until after?
No, I'm going to do it right off.
Do it now.
Want to do it this year.
Get the trade, get the trade values now, subject to the, you know, you're going to put fifteen thousand miles or whatever it is going to be, you know?
Yeah.
Also?
Yeah, I think.
Moving on to more road stuff, Pike Industries paying twenty twenty one contract, is that your? Whoever's going to sign it?
That was it and then we talked.
Yeah, this is the one for Pine Hill. Make it wider and. Oh, this is one even more.
Yeah. Think we'll go, I was thinking about that. I think we'll go with wider and just that. And then maybe put the rest toward an extra fitness. Either way, me and Norman will look at it and decide what's going to work good.
Okay, four hundred and fifty ton sounds.
Yeah.
I saw on John Row.
I don't see anything about the mix on there that we were having a discussion about the other day, the last time.
He's fine. We had a good, we had a heart to heart next day.
So I make a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the Pike Industries bid for the.
Additional tonnage.
Times to Pine Hill to have Scott sign over here for the board.
Someone calls in favor?
Aye, aye.
Sixteen? Today?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Town of Commentary, right?
No, stop right there.
It's his role, right? He would.
We had to, I guess.
I haven't seen yet, which is a. That's a proposed modification to move twenty one to work to twenty three with at the same cost.
Okay, so again, spoke with Norm last week and he's fine with how we want to go about it, agreeable to what we talked about the other night.
And then.
Yeah, you guys just want that in writing.
To be amended, amended just like that. Yeah, postpone the airport road till.
Yeah, so do you guys want to authorize me to get that in writing and sign it for him or? I think what, what is it, the sixteen?
We have time as long as.
We have time.
June.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so we can make motion, authorize Dave Gallo, the road commission to discuss the amendment with Pike.
All right.
As my favorite.
Aye.
Us two. Did you stay from that?
Yes.
I didn't, but you, I did.
You did.
I'm making that note right here. Excellent. All right, so at this point, I'll notify Kate Fletcher, the li- the tax collector that. We have arrived at number eight, delinquent taxes, twenty twenty two tax sale. I took last time in the top, didn't it? Alert the real.
It'd be nice to be out of here.
Keep rolling.
I should have emailed these, but I didn't. Sorry, that's okay because.
This is the total here?
I'm on the back page of that of here. So I just got a check today in the mail, so this worked out well. One of the delinquent papers, so the total.
Is that the top one?
Yeah, well, there's three parcels. And. So the total owed for all years right now is thirteen thousand, six, seventy seven, forty seven.
Awesome. That's amazing, huh?
It is. Who else has it ever been? Um, and then.
Can you get that to zero? Is that?
That's what I'm working at. So if you look on that, on this page here, what the totals are. I've gotten two thousand seventeen to zero. And other years are fairly small. We have some frequent flyers, as we know. Um, and the only way to get them to pay is to have a sale. Unfortunately.
Is the what? Sorry.
Oh, even for like the hundred and twenty nine dollars or the eighteen hundred dollars?
Well, no, it's a combination. So if you look at the other.
I see.
Email. Or that I sent you, because I highlighted also two parcels there that are unlanded mobile homes. And those are a problem for us in this town and every town. Because some of those. Unlanded mobile homes are undesirable properties. And we have one that has been vacated. And still remains on the.
Is that the one that's been vacated for a long time? No one lives there. The people.
As are out of state. So this is a dilemma for us. And this is something that the select board should make a decision on which way to proceed with this one. Because you don't want to set a precedent.
How much, how much acreage do you own, is there?
Uh, there is no, it's an unlanded. So if you look down.
It's just a mobile home.
To.
Land is on where somebody else.
The, the first highlighted parcel. You'll see what that amount is that is owed. And so to answer your earlier question about that much money on twenty fifteen, it belongs to this person.
I see that. I see it. Well, it's a five dollar difference, but it's. Oh, penalty. All right, so it's without the penalty, I get. Yeah, so it's a lot of work for a hundred and twenty five dollars.
Well, it's combined years, because if you look, it hasn't been paid since twenty fifteen to twenty twenty.
Thousand, seven.
Except in twenty seventeen. Something.
Yeah, and I don't know what that is.
That was.
I don't know what it is, but I have to look at it this way.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because why?
Yeah, I, I think that person was still here. At that juncture. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
The place is a ref, right? So it's dilapidated, it's unlivable probably, and it's just only going to get worse.
Right, so we have some choices, which I don't really want to discuss at this point in the meeting.
Well, we could remove the home and spend thousands if we wanted to and clean up the property, clean up the property.
The trouble is, who is the property owner? Is it the next one down?
Well, the property owner is not on the joint list. Well, the property owner is not on the joint list. The person who owns that property happens to just allow it to sit there.
Without collecting any rent or anything.
Well, I don't know the details.
So I would think if we were gonna.
Let's go through it, let's, I think we should, I honestly think we should just pretend it's a, make a precedent, let's pretend it's a. A two hundred, a two thousand dollar, five thousand dollar, doesn't matter the amount, it's a precedent, it's a, I think.
You don't wanna send the message, cuz on that other page, we have another person.
Cuz I think if we get it, even though if we get it, and we, the town has to remove it, we remove it and keeps the, everything looking better.
This isn't a decision you guys have to make tonight.
The trouble with that is you're uh. You're doing a disposal for one landowner and you're gonna offer that to everybody. The second you do that, on me over here, I'll say, oh, I'm not spending fifteen thousand.
But the town gets X amount of tonnage for free, you could tow and bring it up there, it wouldn't cost us anything to get rid.
Yeah, but you're still setting the precedent.
But again, it's, it's.
Could be nice, but the landowner has to accept responsibility at some.
Well, that's the thing as well, that could be something where we could turn to the landowner and say. You, this is the situation.
You allowed it to come here.
Maybe we can, I don't know what the legal ramifications are of that.
Without zoning, it's probably like leaving the car on someone's property and it just.
So I need permission to contact. Mr. Brian Monahan to organize a tax sale, to clean this up, and yes, the goal is to get it to zero.
I make a motion that we. Give Kate authorization or authorize Kate to talk to Brian Monahan and or who was that person?
Kristen Sheamus, she's another person who works in that office. And some, you know, like I said, she's still working on agreements, the people that have. Tax agreements that all of her with them will not go to tax sale, they continue to pay.
Yeah, well, this is a good job, but it's unfortunate, so. So it's. So without zoning, you can't.
Yeah, it's, there's no ordinance to say you can't leave, if it's just like this, it's just like that, and.
You just leave it, and my boy, doesn't that make them a messy land?
So that's what went into happening if we did this, right? It just comes off the grand list and isn't there, it's just gonna be.
And it's still gonna sit there, so I mean, again, it's setting.
Property owner, honestly.
I have not reached out to the land.
And it is, misses just before.
It's not on here.
Is it the misses just before? Owns the land, is it Mrs. Petee?
I, I believe so.
Elsie.
I don't know.
All right, those are, so those type of situations are. Twenty percent, thirty percent of. What the past, past tax.
Correct.
And you abandon living places.
And we're not, I mean, this is frequent for all towns, this is not, this is not just unique for.
What if uh we alerted the town foundation and Elsie reached out to them for help?
Okay.
They should probably do that anyways.
She's gotta verify. But, but just say, for instance, say this hundred and twenty nine dollar fee, so say the town, we go through tax.
That's just for twenty fifteen with that parcel. Cuz that.
Parcels in every one of these, all the way up through, right?
And that adds it, it adds up, the total, the total for what is, what is on the front sheet, on that one parcel, yes.
Yeah. Ten percent of what's due total, right, and it's gonna continue to grow.
Yeah, I'd like to get it off the delinquent list, but we wanna do it the right way. Not do for one that you wanna do for someone else and make it. So anyway.
So yeah, but we have nothing to gain, right, it don't pay, that's, we don't end up with the land, we don't end up with anything.
So just do, I, I say.
Again, it's not something you have to.
Suggestion.
Of course.
Hey, you and I talked about this earlier, which is.
Right.
Basically carbon copy the landowners on the link with tax books. Although I wanna ask. Kristen or Brian first, that's violating the laws, but.
Well, that's what I mean.
Public information, we publish their names in the town reports, all that, so. You know, all we're doing is saying, here's your copy.
Yeah.
Not telling them to pay it.
Is there anything that puts an unlanded into the landowners? Responsibility at some point?
I don't know for sure, but if you look at this, there's nothing.
Yeah, the lawyers haven't jumped on that one yet. Kind of chased that over the years without.
Well, we've had this, we've, we've talked about, we've talked about this, it's last year and the year before. Yeah, cuz it goes to tax sale, no one bid on.
I didn't have her come just for this property.
Didn't we win one the year before, one of them properties?
We, we did win a landed mobile home that was redeemed, Amber Before's property.
Right.
Yeah.
We bid on it.
Right, and they redeemed it.
I think there's also the option to sue unlanded mobile homes, small claims court as well, which of course you have to have somebody actually sue.
Yeah.
Are we allowed as a board to reach out to the guardianship? Or could we, nothing could really do, right?
The value of the home isn't more than a thousand dollars?
I think there's. Kind of the same question I have. We see, see the land, the parcel owners on them, with the link with tax books, their unloaded, unloaded mobile homes, they're sitting on their land. Really even know, parcel holders even know. That that's, I mean, they're not paying their taxes. I guess the same.
Yeah.
But it's not that we can put into a policy because I don't have any zoning, I have no rights to like, but it be, it could be an easy fix to it if we had more authority. You could, you know, if anybody wants to rent any part of their land, it has to be, you know, it'd be, it'd be a whole other.
No, it's, it is a problem because just getting a bill of sale from a person that's brought a mobile home into town is difficult. I have one person up on the Cleveland Road, you know who I'm referring to, it's been there for three years. And I still have no bill of sale on that. So I send the tax bill to the person who used to own it, care of.
There's no way for that to be uh. To put the lien on the actual landowner.
It should end up being able to fall onto the property of the person, that way you'd have more. You'd have some bone, you'd have, yeah, you'd have a state then.
Probably a question.
Yeah, maybe if the town can remove it and then it'll lean on the property, send the bills to the parcel owner.
Or it even goes to the, moves over to.
Yeah, it goes to landowner, you're the reason why this person, this happened.
Yeah, I don't know that you could pass the, the link with tax bill, the, the removal pieces and.
You might be able to do something like that, because even like with driveways. Just say I got a driveway coming down to a, to a road. And that driveway is damaging our road, we have the right, legal right to go in and fix that driveway. To stop damaging our road and build a land, so I don't know if that was, it would be kind of a similar process there with the. Trailer, you know, say we did go in and. It will knock it down, but this is what cops, you're paying.
I guess the question for.
Yeah.
Yeah, ask her, right, or maybe we can, no one else could ever rent that property until the.
Uh, it would be.
Delinquent taxes were paid. You just keep changing the name and people could live there forever, right?
Yeah.
Just one year, give a bill of sale to Phil and then Dave.
It's a problem.
So I just kind of summarize, I think there's two questions there then. Of interest of the board, one is, can you, can, can the town remove the property and build a parcel permanently? And is there a way that the town can then also pass the delinquent tax bill to the?
Right.
Yeah, two separate questions.
Okay.
Okay, I will find out.
All right.
You need a motion to go, to have, let her do the tax.
Second, it, both in favor.
I have Scott motion. Number nine, meeting house update, well. Uh, we had the uh. Exterior and the interior tested for lead paint, we struck lead. Exterior is pretty much coated in lead, except where there's just bare wood, paint on the exterior is lit intended. Uh, I, she'll have the final report to us probably next week on that, the written report. The interior, there's large sections that are not lead contaminated, but unfortunately, the. Pieces of window trim that hold in the window frames are living tin. While the window frames and sashes themselves are not on the interior. That's the good news, the exterior of the window frames and sashes are like covered with lead paint, so no matter what we do with those. Those windows, there's a lid, paint removal issue when you deal with some. The ceiling tiles that uh Jan has been pulling down or moving, there was no sign of lead paint on those. The Wayne's coating that's stained wood, lead. Yeah, it's not even just a little bit, a lot, you know, this is, okay. Um, so. It's a mixed bag, but a lot of lead, so the exterior will require lead remediation from, of course.
Okay.
So um I have um. That's separate in here, no, I did not, I have posted the lead, the painting RFP to, to ask for both with lead or without lead, but we now know that it is lead. So what I propose is, any future postings of that RFP will just say it's lead, tell us what that's gonna cost.
All right, I have, I have this so I can, that other bit that I give you next, I'll just tell them.
Well, I'll rewrite it and get that too. Or you can tell, it's up to you, but I'll, I'll get it rewritten and then after.
They don't have that much time, right, the twenty third.
Well, that's, that's kind of give people the date, otherwise.
If you don't get it, you don't.
Anything, you don't.
We're not gonna prove it till June anyways. My next meeting in June, probably, right?
Right.
Hopefully we'll have.
Cuz this is a five week, this is the five week month where you get an extra week off.
Right. Yeah.
Payroll with these meetings. But okay, well, we'll move, we'll carry on without it. So I'll rewrite that for future, uh, we can put that out there. Today, I, I've had that lead thing posted, now the painting thing posted for a week and not had any. Been curious phone calls, but I know of. No bids received yet, but I'm not surprised at that, I think it would be more towards the end. In fact, we may in fact have to go push buttons like last time and get some activity.
Once they tarp it and scrape it and vacuum and clean it all up, then they can just have it open and paint, I'm sure it's normal business, it's just. The prep.
Right.
And so, yeah, you know, like I Richard Cody. Which I'm working on my barn is. He knows someone, and he works for them.
So, well, that's what I was just gonna say, was that if we're getting people saying, ah, we don't wanna touch it because of the lead. Why, we get a separate lead contractor coming and cleaning it up and then a paint.
Well, let me see, let's see if we get any bits.
Yeah, no.
And then if we don't, and possibly, who knows what that would be, you get to hire someone like that. If they set up all to take all the lead off, they might as well paint it, cuz they're definitely set up.
Yeah, that's, I think that's probably your showstopper with. Um, the lead on there is not necessarily dealing with the lead, it's dealing with the heights involved, dealing with.
Right, because you think, you think you're just gonna go up there with a big sixty foot boom and scrape and paint the thing, it ain't gonna be quite that easy. But it may be easier, and I don't know if this is easier, well. If you ripped all the siding off and you put new vinyl siding, or, or just put vinyl over all of that.
Is you, you're still gonna bait the lead. I'm pretty sure you have to bait the lead if you're, if you're just covering it.
I don't think so.
So we're currently in, I know, we do the lead, the lead testing person, she said we're in this kind of magical spot right now where. We could kind of do whatever we want, but the law's changing in October, once the law changes, we will have to obey.
So when I reach out.
Because it's not really used for anything, that's magic, if it was a daycare center or a school, there's no way.
So right now, we could just. We could cover the outside with vinyl siding if we wanted to. Or we would lose our historical. Like that one, the reason the church in Irisburg those kids so good, it's all vinyl.
Is it?
Yes, I looked at it, I'm like. It's all vinyl, it's all wrapped and it's all vinyl, I got nice big corners, it's all vinyl.
So vinyl wouldn't count, if you got something that look. I guess I wouldn't worry about it too much, because there's all kinds of other work we could do in that place. Like the painting it, well.
I love the way Jan talked, it didn't matter, cuz you've already used that amount of the grant toward him.
Well, the problem is the conditions of the grant would.
Still cover everything.
You have to keep it real, you have to keep following it or you lose it.
Have to keep taking pictures and giving them credit, and we didn't do that. Come around and.
We probably just go off and rip off. Put on.
Well, the problem with taking the siding off is they already should have been led, but you still have to.
Still have to follow the same.
And they've gotten paint all over the ground and that needs to be backed up.
Probably.
It would be a lot freaking quick, you put tacks down, you rip it off and.
First, you gotta tend it, but it's still gonna be a lot quicker than scraping.
It's always a live solution to recite it.
Definitely siding sucks anyway.
Maybe it's time we need to get some options.
Well, I guess, you know, this is how we're gonna get options, we're gonna get our painting bid.
Yeah.
And if it comes in at a number that you think's okay, then we'll just strip it and go with it.
Yeah.
But if it comes in and we know it's gonna be more, like, definitely, I think for a hundred thousand dollars, you could rip all the siding off and have it all wrapped in vinyl. And we wouldn't have to mess with it for thirty years. But is, how much, if it's gonna cost the same to scrape and paint that shitty wood, that's not that good.
Well, that's what I mean, it's like, if it's gonna be the same cost to have something last for.
I think it's gonna be a ten year, ten years of painting again, right?
Probably.
All right, hopefully, I mean, hopefully we could get away with just painting and doing that, but I don't know.
So always the numbers, Bill's from last year, when he sent that in.
He was twenty nine. Guessing it's not, I.
Oh, yeah.
I told Jared, I saw Jared, the week you were putting it out, made him aware of it. He said Bill was still in Florida.
I think let's just see how this goes.
Yeah.
The bid.
With the bid.
Yeah.
Well, that's why the church in Irisburg is final.
And this is in Irisburg.
Yeah.
United Church.
Go look at it.
The issue we would have is the detail, the moldings and all that, there would be some things that would have to be painted.
Yeah, but that's. Oh, no, 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 they rewrap it and they just change the contour. They would wrap it all with metal, it just wouldn't have the same detail, they would just make a bigger bend around it. And you would, it would just, it would still look fancy, but it would. Like some of that stuff, the contour would be cut more square and it'd be like a double bent metal. But if you look at, go look at Irisburg, I couldn't believe it, I was like, I, after I went by here, I had to go to Irisburg and I started looking at the church a little closer, like. It's freaking vinyl, no wonder.
Okay, so if I could get permission, actually, the, the lead testing person recommended that we do soil testing.
Can we really vacuum this up?
I don't think that's really necessary, it's the, it, the, the, the critical piece really is the soil testing on the Gerard's property.
All right.
Especially where they have the delivery bushes in their garden that's right there, so can I get the before, so that whatever we do. We. We're mediating paint, we don't remediate, we tear off, we, whatever it is, we know where we started. I think at this point, there, there was not enough, because that was all pulled down, it was low, it, it's all right there in the immediate safety building. Not on their.
Have you cleaned up the?
Just worry.
And with the wood, you took it all away?
Yeah, I mean, I got a little bit in the turn and they left some, there's some up by the garden.
It doesn't.
All right.
You know, it's not immediate, it's not all gonna immediately seep in just cuz it got rained on today.
Yeah.
No, it's probably washed away.
So should it be vacuuming?
Yeah.
As much as we can.
We can do the vacuuming.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the lead, lead person just said, yeah, with the shop back. It's one. I mean, you probably want to filter.
You don't.
Your guy's gonna be like, dude, you have to be vacuuming the ground.
That boy don't care what he does.
Yeah. But I let it dry a few days. I said, I answered one line, I need to show you the shop back.
Oh, it might be better wet.
Yeah, because you'll get less soil. But if I can, can I get permission to go ahead and just execute the soil testing? I think would be.
Yeah.
A good idea. Okay.
Yeah.
Just that would just be a use. Things be done except for our knowledge, because our ability to defend ourselves against the. So town administrator position, I, I, I gave you the, what I got posted, what went out today in the papers was the short advertisement. Hey, um, once you get in front of you. Check and make sure it's in the papers. It also got posted online on the LPT. Immediately last week. Just has a link to our webpage to ask for a descriptive two page description, which is the second. So you can see I did the edits. I do that salary range here.
I think that was good, that's.
I haven't been barraged phone calls yet, unfortunately. So please, you know, pass it out to all your friends. And I don't care. I know somebody.
No, I was looking because our website, so this will come through, our website is based off of town of Alberts and was looking at theirs comparing it. They have a position, support assistant position.
Yeah, there's a.
Albany too.
All kinds of.
Just all.
Court, trailer.
And she Albany, I think they're going in that direction too.
Yeah, they.
Sounds like that way I want. Principles. I want how many principles up here they're looking for. I don't know. He's leaving?
He's leaving, no, yeah.
They have not, they're. You got a better offer.
Closer to home. Money too, money too.
I think they paid pretty well.
I know, for here, for here, yes. You know, Burlington, it's a, it's a whole.
Yeah, it's twice, but it costs you twice as much to live too.
But if you're already established or somewhere.
Yeah.
He's actually in.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a little closer. Okay, so. That's what we're on that. That's all I have. Town administrator update. Uh, okay, well, that leads us to number eleven, which I will hand back over to Ted Tangway, town board.
Do you have any pictures to share, like your counterpart here to show us what you want to do?
Visit it downstairs. It's in the town administrator's home office or current office.
The ballot?
If the box.
There's a new ballot box. I haven't come in to.
It's um. I opened the door on the way out and it's.
It's very pretty. And colorful.
Pretty big. It's, it's still in its box. It's in the.
Yeah, so there is pavement down there. Do we necessarily, I saw her email saying for a concrete pad, but couldn't we bolt it down to the pavement?
So is this something that's gonna be permanently?
That's, yeah. Does it have to be they want, so no one steals it? They want it like?
It has to be permanently affixed. So usually what everybody is doing is they're doing a concrete, uh, concrete slab and bolting it down to it. And it does still have to remain down near the road so that if somebody just wants to be able to sort of like drive up, they can sort of drive up, just put down the handle, put the ballot in or whatever they have for mail and then be able to take off.
Pull away a lot easier when.
Yeah. I know, since the beginning of COVID, when they had given us the other ballot box, I'm sure you've seen the other one. This one is very similar. I believe it's designed a little bit better. Uh, but this one has a lot of the graphics as far as it has our town name on it, Town of Coventry, plus it has like the red, white and blue election verbiage on it as well. So it looks a little bit more professional. But what we have seen or what I have seen is people, of course, it's all new for people as well. They're placing their ballots in the black box by the front door. They're placing ballots in the absentee ballot box that we put out. Of course, we end up taking it away at the end of the election period. Um, they're putting either some of Kate's payments in the ballot box or they're putting other town mail in the ballot box. So they're putting stuff intermixed between the boxes when the ballot box is out, which is, I mean, perfectly fine. We can go through, we can disperse it out. I think it would just make it easier for the residents to know, okay, you know what? Remove the black box from the side of the building. This is the one box. It's marked Town of Coventry. Anything and everything can go inside that box. Another thing, it's a lot more secure. Um, David Gout can probably go ahead and attest to as far as how easy the black box on the side of the building is very easy to get into. And manipulate that mark.
We have, um, in front of, here, we don't have it.
There's no.
We have concrete. If we had a sidewalk and we had like a real granite curb, we don't have a curb, we could bolt it to the curb without a forest slab.
I'm just thinking maybe a four K park.
You can add a concrete pad right there, but where's ours? Just you need to have.
It needs to not be right in front of the building because you, if you drive through, you can't drive in front of the building because people always parked here. If it was.
I think I'm just on the other side of the ring.
Yeah, right on the line.
Where are you driving?
I know, I was just thinking that, maybe down by.
As long as it's visible.
Maybe down by the telephone hole there.
You can, you just drive into the driveway, have it in driveways, at least temporary.
And then back out of the box.
If you really want to drive up to it, back out of it.
You guys come up to the place and put it in.
Yeah, why don't you?
I guess the other thing is just try to keep in mind. Clean it out, clean it out, yeah. Like I want to hear, like I like to come in because we just shove it off the steps. I'll come in with the tractor, clean it out and.
So I'm thinking driveway, if we absolutely have to be able to drive up to.
Do you have, you have to be able to not get out of your vehicle? Is that what they're saying?
That's technically because of us being able to receive it for free. That is one of the things that they are stating. They want people to be able to do, especially because of COVID. The less contact, they don't have to get out of their car. It's like the, the mailboxes that you have like at the Derby post office. You can just drive up, deposit your mail in, take off.
What we could do, what we could do, this is what we can do. Let's temporarily put it somewhere, right? But let's start working on the plan of.
Sidewalk?
No, home removal, parking. If we have parking on the side of the building here, then we can have it all in one separate place where there's no parking, where people can drive in, hit the box and turn around and leave. So. Right?
When are you expecting that to happen?
That was the first time it came out.
We can't get the church.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, if that was gonna happen within a year, then we can just carry on how we have been and just put it out front, just chain it down, but with the expectation that within a year, it's gonna permanently find a home. But if you think, no, that's not for like, you know, two years, three years, four years, then yeah, I'd just rather go just.
In a year, we can find a home for it.
We'll have to do something because honestly, there's no good place right close enough.
Well, just right to the side of the ramp.
Yeah, but it's on the wrong side of your vehicle when you're driving.
Yeah, that's the thing with the driver, right? You can pull in and pull in, you can have it on the correct side. The only issue would be training people that that's where, that's what that is. Yeah, to pull into the drive.
If you had a parking, if you had all the employees parked down there, you could put it right next to the wall, maybe.
Okay, we're gonna think about and discuss it because maybe if we just made a little bit past the wall and we made of made a little drive and put the box right there on the end of the wall for now and just when people could pull in, it's not a parking spot, but it's a box spot, right?
So this got to be up by when? The midterms?
No.
Well.
And, and we can go temporary until when?
Yeah.
For a year.
Well, if you guys aren't gonna do anything right now, then I would just suggest we just keep doing what we have been doing for the elections. I just let you know, I need the box pulled, you pull up. We put it out and then we put it back. Um, but if you guys are gonna be planning on doing something in a year, then I would say versus going to an expensive doing something now than removing it, we can wait for a year. It's just, it's a pretty box. I'd like to be able to get it out there for it to start to be seen and people to really understand what the purpose is for.
We leave, should we bolt it down to the asphalt to the summer and early and till winter?
Well, what I'm saying is how often we vote.
Yeah.
This year we've.
You know, it would replace.
State elections.
Normal mail to our normal drop.
Oh, it's a drop box for everything.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
Yes.
For everything. Yeah, let's look where, let's look when we leave tonight, just at the end of this wall. Let's just, maybe we could maybe spend five grand and make a nice turn of, turnabout where people can pull in and to start to something.
You can get some fake rock inside it.
And if you're gonna go take a peek at that, I did notice this morning when I parked my truck, right on the corner of that wall, David may know this, I don't know. But you have probably like a three, well, no, I'm maybe not quite a foot, maybe a ten inch where the tar is actually sunk and gone. There's a hole. I don't know what that means for what's underneath that spot. But you may want to check that out.
Yeah, John brought it to my attention today.
Okay, and then the other thing is because this is another new box we got from the secretary of state's office, of course, we have that other box that doesn't have any name tags or anything on it. Would you guys be opposed, um, if maybe I offered that to the school, if they would want that, has a drop box outside their facility free of charge because we received it free of charge?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. That's fine.
That way we're just not hanging on to something. I mean, of course, that's not gonna happen until we actually put our good one into use. Um, so I guess until that time, David or Dave, that if you want to move the one that's in the administrator's office, maybe out back into the garage. Um, we'll just keep that stored until it finds its permanent home and we'll just keep using the existing one until the new one comes out.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Please, and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll look at it. We'll look at it. Thanks for staying. Why you got the excavator out? All right, just, just put it, just put it.
Box description.
Oh, the stake can make everything complicated.
Oh, we got an audit twenty twenty one update. So I, we're back in contact with our auditor. So what kind of news? And, but we're, we're still finishing up the twenty twenty one audit. And, uh, but I expect it over the next month-ish, we should have that done. And then we've done the twenty twenty two. So the question is, are we committed to changing auditors with this for fiscal year twenty twenty two, or are we perhaps okay with asking the current auditor to stay on another year? We have another town administrator.
I'm okay with keeping it the same. It's a lot less work for you. You guys kind of speak the same language at this point.
Yeah, I mean, we're working.
And we haven't had any red flags.
Isn't it supposed to be a good business practice to change that up every three years?
Somewhere between three to five.
Okay.
And we've been where.
Another grand philosophy.
And we've done, this is, we've done three, right?
This would be four, correct?
So then twenty twenty one is year four?
Yeah, we did sixteen, seventeen, I'm sorry, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, seventeen? Seventeen, no, seventeen was not the, we started in eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one.
Yeah, yeah, because I started this first.
So this will be the fifth year. And of course I had to ask him, you may not want to, kind of ask him permission because last year he agreed to continue, but may stay otherwise. So I'm not really looking for a commitment. I'm just looking for permission to even ask.
Think we could ask the question.
Otherwise I need to immediately engage in a request for its kind of thing or an advertisement of some sort to put it out there and come up to someone because we'll be in fiscal year twenty two, three. Real soon, so the twenty two audit will probably kick off somewhere in August.
I'm, I'm okay with throwing the question out there and asking if you do it one more year. I would think what if we, if he was willing to do one, we are definitely say this would definitely be the last year. If everybody else is okay with that, I mean.
So then I would want to highly follow almost the same schedule of putting the request out there to hire somebody to do fiscal year twenty three, pretty much right away. I mean, it's kind of the same, all we need to change is get, I would start advertising right away. See if we can get somebody to commit the year out. So we know.
Yeah. Right. And I'm sure this auditor, if I can recommend an auditor. Probably doubt.
Or he may want to revisit it as well. I don't know, but because there's always a chance if we get no bids or we get some ridiculous price stuff.
Okay.
They can also get the list and that the SU sends out prior to our RFPs for our school audit. There's usually like five to six different auditors and firms.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of guidance out there on how to. Cumulated that over a couple, past couple of years as well. Okay, so I will take that as a permission to go ahead and discuss continuation for one year. End of that, that would be the end and go ahead with a proposal to advertise to get that in front of you guys at the next meeting, so you can at least see it first.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Okay, so that leads me directly into some other exciting things. I'll be April twenty, play two treasures report. It's the moment you came to see. It's hiding here somewhere. Ellen. One second. Slightly open the window.
Or it's foreign.
There's an AC somewhere.
Forgot who didn't like.
Amanda.
You just had to throw the hose out the thing, right? Those weren't pretty good. It's, it's something that you want to do before the meeting and get it cooled down because it is. How did they just put a mini split in here?
That'd be a.
Just put it down there and give it a three head mini split.
Three head mini split.
One, yeah.
Just for four.
With a price of, well, I'm telling you, it wouldn't be bad to have them be heat too. So like.
Yep, well, they're all, they're, they're all. Both now. Oh, they, yeah, they're nice. I put them in my new house.
Yeah, they're awesome. Unless it gets, gets really cold and you know December through that this is gonna run all the time, then make some.
Some of them are down, it's good down. Maybe thirty. Well, there's a couple of them. Seven to fifteen a year.
I don't know. He needs her whole place. Say air conditioning, the mini split and whatever. Jordan heats his whole, his, his house and garage. Electric goes never one in two hundred bucks and he keeps it seventy, sixty eight, seventy all summer long. And then winter, he uses their oil and the radiant heat, but most of the time those, those, those electric.
I've been thinking about it. Then can you see my report? Okay. Had to go town on song. All right, April treasures report, nothing particularly stunning or interesting to order in on, on the top part anyway. Little bit of road infrastructure spending. I think that was for Pine Hill Road. But otherwise very normal month. There's no questions. I'll move on down to the bottom part where in the world of investments, not so normal. A little bit of turmoil in the markets, uh, but actually we're, we're holding up pretty well. Scott and I. Scott and I met with our investment advisor last week.
We're about two hundred eighty thousand better than we were last week.
Yeah, I didn't remember today.
Well, whenever this was.
This was April thirty.
Oh, so no, we're okay. So we met with them. Yes, we're worse.
Not sure where we're at. I didn't look at it. I try not to get too entangled in the day to day coming to goings, but he was able to make a convincing case that. We're not suffering. We're, we're on plan basically. We're, we're making our seven, seven and a half percent a year as even with the market downturn. And taking advantage of the market downturn to actually reshuffle the portfolio a bit. Balance out some things.
Yeah, it wasn't all boom and doom, so.
Yeah, it was.
Seems easier when it's your account, spare the town. I was looking at my retirement one more.
I, I wanted to add to mine, I'll be honest with you, but you know.
Well, you know, it's always there, there's gonna be some downtimes. Historically, those have been less than the. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Share. National opioid settlement choices. This is actually a fairly quick one. You may have heard in the news some time ago that governments sort of nationwide. Agreed to a settlement with the, with the two big opioid manufacturers. And we have a choice as a town whether we opt in to the settlements or we go sue them on our own. But what I'm asking permission to do is just to opt in. I don't think there's really any money into it. When you spread it out, the way it's gonna be spread out. So I really can't tell you there's gonna be big bucks for the town. I don't think that's the case. And there's a caveat on that money that is for basically remediation of the opioid problem. So the implication is you would spend it to clean up your opioid problem or various ways that you might do that.
And that goes with individual towns. That's not going to.
It's a little unclear how it's gonna be distributed. I think if I read it verbatim, it's unclear, except that I get the impression it goes to the state and. It's not unlike the ARPA money, the state kind of has some.
And then it just goes to each clinic probably gets a, depending on how many users are.
It's unclear who funds what and does what to who. But it's, it's not money like ARPA money. ARPA money was a trillion bucks. This is a few billion. You spread your peanut butter, spread that over.
Yeah, they each tongue eighteen thousand.
States.
Eighteen bucks.
Anyway, I, I think it's not arguing on it. Cause I haven't really studied it in huge detail. Just didn't see worth the effort other than to say, okay.
Yeah.
If you want me to opt in, I'll.
We need a motion for that. I make a motion at the town. I'm just opting to the settlement choices of the national settlement choice. Oh, is in favor.
Minutes from the April eighteenth to twenty fifth and May second select board meetings. I've actually printed them this time.
I just play it through.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the. Minutes as they are written for April eighteenth, twenty fifth and May second.
Closing favor.
I do have shredder. I made a shredder. No, I'm just. Why do I think so bad to do with it? But it goes to the recycling. In theory, I'm assuming it makes the building, it was like, goes into harvest. Downstairs. Fall Festival fireworks. I have, I put copies of the contract in front of you. I have the, the actual one for signature in my hands. Along with the permit, so don't sign what's in front of you. So there's the contract.
I think we already approved like ten thousand extra or more for three months.
Ten percent. It was, yeah, so we prepaid and you, we get ten percent thrown into it. So the contract still looks like seven thousand fifty, ten percent.
Yeah, the real one.
I have the real one here. So actually, I got that my name's on it, so you guys can vote it. And then there's the. Display permit. So I would say just have Scott.
Where's that come?
And we're planning to do it in.
So I make a motion that we accept the North Star fireworks contract for the summer. Already, I already.
Yeah, we already paid. It's just accepting the contract.
I accept the contract. The amount of seven thousand dollars and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, Phil's recuse himself.
So, yeah, it was, yeah. And just as a note, I put whatever my payments have been put into this. So I don't get paid, they put in extra.
Oh. Thank you, Phil.
I work for North Star. Yeah, so.
So they give us an extra.
Big, an extra cake. Probably what it turns out to be, especially named Rocky have Phil's name on it. I'll make a motion that Scott sign the fireworks display permit. That was the twenty seventh and then the rainy day at the twenty. Remember David. Twenty seventh and rainy day at twenty. Here on camera briefly. My YouTube moment. Where's this health officer?
Uh, it's just, we had elected Paige, Paige or Don, Ron and I.
Yes, you actually, you recommend him to the state, the state. Yeah, he mailed me a bunch of paperwork and said, hey, get with my program.
Do they need to authorize me to sign this?
So now, because it's appointed already. You're the, you're the chair. You're pretty popular. Look, other business, you have the website and the plugs. You wanna pull my website?
All these wanna go through it or?
Hey, while he's.
You guys, so.
While he's doing the website and getting it up there, have the generators been serviced?
He does it yearly.
I just haven't heard anything about generators in a while and I just.
No, D and D usually just comes in on their own.
Usually they do it in the fall, right before winter.
Think it's X Y Z. I don't remember. Did the school.
What was?
Kind of work a couple of years.
General early season services. Oh, that was, is that the cemetery?
We had to pay for this.
It's, it's marked as the town shelter. That's why it's. X boys. We should give him. Of course, it doesn't. Try Alpine Web Media dot X Y Z.
Talking to me?
Yeah, Dad, you should know this.
I don't think we paid him that much.
The dust is gone.
Just go through polls, three weeks.
Oh, done. Alpine Web dot X Y Z. There we go. So I spent some time. It doesn't look like it on this page. This is front page. We need to figure out what we want to put on it. But yeah, David and I can, and I got, so I tried to do that. I need to get a hold of Bill because that is one image up there.
Right.
I didn't realize that. I went and changed it. I'm like, wait a minute, why is it not, we got the rest of it. It's one image, so.
Picture, we want a picture of the box.
Information to change. No, and that's, I gotta talk to him about how he thinks to do that, right?
Yeah. A picture of the.
I don't know. I can't see what you guys are talking about.
A picture of a new ballot box.
Yeah.
That way people will know, like, hey, where is the box?
Absolutely.
Put a no on it. Hey, put a no on it. Like, amazing.
Perfect. Thank you. We gotta get rid of that bridge.
Yeah, that's, that's one more. So that and this page, we need to figure out what we wanna put on.
Wanna put the church after it's painted, a nice picture of the church lit up with fireworks from the fire.
From this festival.
Get in a.
We wanna.
Picture that way.
We wanna blow.
We're in the wrong place for that. Well, no, somebody would, okay, I'll have to remember.
Yes, that's true. We're gonna have here from a web design perspective, it's set up for a horizontal picture.
Yeah.
We need a vertical setting of that. Yeah, that whole thing needs to go.
Yeah, so I, I.
We might.
That's not even our bridges, is it?
No, that's. Actually, I mean, is that our? So yes, that needs to be worked, that'll be worked on. And then this part, we need, we need to come up with a goal, we wanna put in there. Um, but I went through the rest of it through, fixed up the menus. As Bill Alexander said, there was a mess. I think other than that picture in the homepage, everything's in at least a way that we can. Start it live, but. There's. A thing for each of these, each committee. And then I got the, I got. Almost up to date, still need to do the rest of April. And then once we get it, we can work on moving the older ones over. And that's where the same one, all the other ones, online payment links and that, that was not as hard as I thought it was. It's just a link to websites, yeah. Yeah. I changed that, so it goes to there. This, I wanna try to figure out how to order that up, so it's blocked.
Yes.
Cause it looks confused.
Yeah.
And then after the contact space, I gotta figure, I don't think that contact is, there's some configuring to be done, which might not be able to happen. I have to remove it to the actual site. But I went through, down through all of the, you know, lists. It's a little, we just need to just verify things that it's correct. There is a recreation committee page. I know we aren't calling this.
I know.
Calling this a group, but.
No, we haven't been doing a good, this.
I think.
Last year we got off kill.
Well, and I remember that was with Amanda here. She said, why don't we just do it as a group and then you don't have to follow the open meeting law, so.
I don't remember that. I remember.
That was, that was when the first fall festival was coming up.
Cause we actually. Cause we actually have used to appoint all the rep committee.
Yes, we did.
And then we stopped doing that. Then last year.
So last year.
The girls are working hard, but we don't really have meetings. I think too, I'm gonna talk to them. Maybe we can have a meeting invite. Planning commissioner, not much.
Yeah, and after looking through this, I was one of thinking, yeah, it was a little easier because then you didn't need to worry about the laws. But if you didn't call them a certain thing, but it might be something you probably ought to do.
We should have like a record.
Is there still a seven zero commission? He's a job. BCA, yeah, we'll send you this link to, I just, there's anything, is there anything on the BCA?
No, not only, but we can probably go through and at least just list who they are. And probably talk about elections. Basically, that's what the primary purpose of the BCA is. Um, and just. Any property of grievance, and that's really it. And the same thing for the B O A will just be a baitment. We can maybe put the form if they do wanna go ahead and complete it to submit a request for a baitment. Just some different information like that.
Is V trends or whoever, do you? Paint any line in the road this year?
Other than that, I think just. Getting a couple of things updated. I'm ready to go like. I'd almost say we could move this over in time.
I joke down that I.
And work on that picture. We got a time constraint because the domain he's got is coming due. He said about two weeks ago, he did, it's coming up in about twenty days. So I emailed them to figure out. What that actual date is. Well, don't, so, so the work I, the work I asked you to, I am finally doing up to. It's actually, once I got in. So for the, for now, I can do it. Cause once it's up and we get just stuff on it. Just need to know what to put on.
There's too much reflectivity in this world.
Yeah. It's all, yeah, and I found you can actually go to the sites once you're logged in and find the pages and scroll down the pages and once you find the page you wanna do, you can go with it.
Yeah.
But I think the menus are. Tweaking.
Yeah.
So. Oh, I, I would then have to do it same here.
So, okay, one thing, Phil, I know you're doing this on your own time, but I'd like you to. Write up some kind of contract for the town from your company. For hours spent on I T and, but they don't expect you to do this for free. So submit us a bill. I know you've got hours in the past and we'd like to pay for your time for sure.
So, yeah, whatever you want, just tell.
Yeah, I think that, right now, I, I wanna get something on that whole page.
Need to do something with this.
And we can get that taken care of.
That's not gonna be.
Even if I gotta find, I, I put the picture of the sign up there and it all disappeared. I'm like, oh crap. But I can, I can. Pretty soon we'll have a school with a new addition. We'll have.
Yeah, and it looks like you can do actual photo reels too on that top bar, so.
Can we make a link on here for the school to have it?
Yeah.
Ver over to theirs, because they're not listed, right?
No, but we can definitely do that.
Okay.
The town donation, are they?
That's not on here. If they got, if they got something that.
We have our own website.
Why not?
But I think they're probably gonna ask if probably put just a little link or whatever on your website.
There's a resource you need help. I didn't pay.
Oh, there's, that's what you'll do is a link.
Yeah. You do have country bills.
We'll send you one.
Perfect. Maybe what we may wanna do is just prioritize those listings.
No, I don't need it.
You know, and asked Rocky the other day and said, well, you just Google it. No, whatever, I guess. It should be on the website.
Yes. Yeah. Even though we can do it there or we can make some other way. So it's easier because not everybody's gonna look at the links.
Even like is is the uh fire district on here?
There's nothing in there about it. That's the type of thing that, yeah, we can definitely.
We should have have that on there. Like if someone thinks about buying a house in town that's for sale, I mean, what about water? You can see how great it is and click on it.
Tastes good.
So I'm gonna move fix the picture. We'll get something up on that homepage and then we're gonna get it moved over. I think we've got maybe two weeks. You don't have, we're not constrained to two weeks to move it, but once that domain name is due, he's shutting it off. So we won't be able to do anything with it. It'll sit there and you can just, once we say, yeah, go ahead. So I don't know why we need to wait. We can just go ahead and move it.
So do we need to give?
Do we lose access to?
That I asked him that question. I I I asked him if he knows if there's a way to. Download the website from GoDaddy to at least have a local copy. Cause as if there is a lot of stuff on there that. It's almost like.
You can use the browser to do some of that. I'll explore that a little bit.
Yeah.
So. But yeah, there's like hundred thousand files.
Is there someone we can in the town? Maybe not. Dave, he's a little bit overworked. But anyone who has time to look through, make sure all the addresses and phone numbers and spelling and all that stuff.
And that was something I was thinking to try and figure out what could do.
Who who could we hire to do that? Who has access to that stuff?
We can give somebody access, like anybody can get to that site right now and just go through it and make notes of what needs to change. And then we can do the changes.
But who has the access to the corrections? You know, like. If I was to look at that, I wouldn't know if that address is right or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Who has the real information? Cause there's not enough of us. Right. Like, is Deb interested in spending a day reviewing all?
There's not a lot as far as contact information goes. And I've skimmed through it and checked a couple of things. It looks fine, but I think maybe between the three, four of us. You and Kate, you guys can all run through it and just see. Cause it's all one sixty eight Main Street. And then you just have the four numbers.
Well, so something like this, we have to be, it is a lot to be careful with. I know it says mailing address, but I wanna put the words physical address.
Yeah, yeah.
People mail stuff to one sixty eight Main Street.
Yeah.
There's this, there's a few of these things that really only me and Deb probably. Kind of detect as we know, because we get right over the head with them.
Right. I sent it to one sixty eight Main Street. Well, sorry, we're not gonna ever get it there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Or I sent it to box one oh four.
Box one oh four brought us some bail that they had received. For the town today.
And and so the worst offender, the state. Get the state of Vermont to change your mailing address. Good luck.
But that's because they have like twenty different portals that has that email address everywhere. So if you just call one department, they just change it. For their department, their department only.
Anyway, so what I was thinking on this homepage actually is, I was looking at town of Alberg is there's a little. Blurb of the town. I can't find a write up of this is Coventry. I looked through a couple of town reports and there wasn't. Is there? I would, that that's what I thought there. And then.
So basically we can design this header.
Can you spare time, Dave?
Yeah, well, I can, I can.
The weird thing about this was I couldn't find where they were storing.
I know that was the problem. I wanted to find it because I could edit that.
I could find the.
It wasn't, it wasn't in the media.
But the whole thing wasn't there. Like, although it was pretty bad to you, obviously it was a picture.
That's why I thought it was all separate.
Yeah, it's like we cannot have the court office hours. And the address can't be there.
Yeah.
So the state is up here to do stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Between the two of us, well.
We're just gonna keep grinding on that.
And we'll get it up.
Okay, we probably will take some heat when the old site goes cold and this comes up, but that's okay. Just cause people hate change.
Yeah.
Even if it's.
Who knows? It might go, oh, this is so much easier.
Do better, improve, doesn't doesn't blow up all over the screen like our full site does.
And this is actually built for mobile too.
Let's stop that share. The flood zone update is quite quick, just to let you know that I finally got ahold of the surveyor who has worked for us before. He was not, he was not able to do the work we need done, the monument elevation because it's the equipment that's required. He needs GPS, it's a forty thousand dollar GPS that she doesn't have. He recommended we go to Horizons. Now, try to get Nate on the phone. That doesn't work. Eventually, yeah.
I have his cellphone.
The actual effort to do the work is probably very small, but it's. I understand the the challenge and why. I can't remember George Rummer, he can't, he doesn't have the GPS. It isn't, I know our like a car GPS phone is thirteen white. But the the one that actually do surveying grade work, which is really, really precise.
So Pat Dale, Pat does that. He used to work for I, I don't, oh, he had a side business.
I think that's who did my house.
Yeah, it was Richie LaFoe and whoever it's a side thing. Yeah.
Somebody comes and does foundation marking.
Yeah, he just puts the pins in.
But I don't know that that's again, it's the GPS piece of that, that's.
They do, uh, they do a lot of stuff.
They have that, they have that thing. Well.
To start with all.
I don't, I. They had white trucks, I think. Website. Yeah, it'll be on there. There'll be a link. Go on, it'll be right on here. Just go RG Inc. and then it'll come up. Probably and then it'll. I forget. It's been five or six years since.
Yeah, now that you mentioned, I think, I think I've actually used them. I think that concludes other business. Onto warrants. I think we covered census already. Just keep on the phone, Brian. And I have asked over links again for a copy of the updated contract. Without as much as a reply to the emails.
Wait, did we get their check in this batch?
Uh, we've already paid him, I think. Yes. In fact, in fact, I can tell you we have because they cashed it.
Hotel, we're bitten. We'd like a contract. That matches the check that we sent them.
Are you talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
You reviewed those.
Yeah, the lumber you guys got, was that for the church? There's a bunch of lumber. Should that go under the church's shop supplies? Is that easy to change without having to?
Yeah, I have to do the same thing no matter what you do. So you.
So there's some picking shovel up for lumber. There was some painter. Maybe go through it again.
I don't know if I had to buy anything. I think I had some.
Cause there was a gallon of paint and spray paint.
Three or four different paint ones in there.
So just put the lumber. Yeah, the lumber was.
I think I'm pretty sure that was a gallon of the paint primer.
I mean, so no. I'll make a motion to accept the warrants as they are.
Close in favor? Make a motion that we adjourn. All in favor?
Thanks, Dave. Let me quit that recording.
Thank you, everybody.